Meeting is adjourned. I'm now gathering us into our regular meeting number thirty-three. It will now come to order. May I have a, it will now come to order. And we have the playing of the national anthem. Could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
This afternoon, council is pleased to have Pastor Vincent Gold, the senior pastor of Unity Baptist Church, will lead us in prayer. Pastor, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you, Council President. Let us pray. Our great God and Father, we are grateful for this time to share. Lord, we thank you for our great city of Columbus. We ask your blessings upon the city, our mayor, Mayor Gifford, our council president Harden, council members and staff. Lord, we pray as that business is discussed tonight, that you would give understanding, wisdom and knowledge, that things be done decent and in order. Even as this great city leaders look to ways to help this city during this COVID, during these unprecedented times, give them understanding. Help them to navigate us through this process. The Lord will be better. We thank you now. Keep us in your perfect peace. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Gold. Thank you for being with us this evening. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three seventeen point twelve. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three eleven point twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dismissed with a reading of the journal?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Earlier this week, the mayor reached out and asked if he could come to council. And as this used to be his old stomping grounds, we wanted to welcome him back. I think to talk about and frame kind of a conversation that we will have as a community going forward over the next couple of months, and that is the state of our budget and how we move forward together. With that, I invite our mayor, Andy Gifford.
Well, good evening, Mr. President, and to all of the council members. Thanks for allowing me to join you for a few minutes tonight. All the members of the cabinet, Auditor Kilgore, City Attorney Klein. You know, when COVID nineteen showed its ugly face in Columbus back in March, we knew we faced three crises: a health crisis, human service crisis, and an economic crisis. Together, we've made some enormous sacrifices as a community to slow the spread of the virus and have seen some progress as of late because of the great leadership and guidance of Dr. Michika Roberts, but also our community's commitment, the way folks have stepped up, you know, by complying with facial coverings and masks prohibiting the sale of alcohol at restaurants and bars after ten P. M. and pushing for testing and contact tracing, the likes of which we've never seen through Columbus Public Health. And I'm grateful to each and every one of you for your support of that work. We've also invested significant funds to ease the burden on our residents who have been disproportionately negatively impacted by these crises. A million dollars for the Community Shelter Board, half a million dollars for the YMCA, four hundred thousand dollars for Life Care Alliance for senior meals, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Urban League for technology assistance for small businesses. And now we're facing the economic side of the crisis from the city. Because our revenue is so closely tied to income tax, the staggering unemployment rate has drastically reduced our revenue. And on June ninth, Auditor Kilgore officially reduced our resources for the general fund by forty-one point five million dollars. Tonight, we're putting forth an ordinance to reduce the general fund budget by forty-one point five million dollars. Because of solid fiscal management led by Finance Director Joe Lombardi and all of our cabinet in partnership with council, we've been able to save forty million dollars by eliminating travel, delaying merit raises, and imposing a hiring freeze on almost all positions. The additional shortfall will be made up from the basic city services fund that currently has a balance of twenty point eight million dollars. Colleagues, these are very trying times. And as our residents and employers struggle, we'll have to continue to find ways to manage spending. But I'm committed to assuring that core city services remain intact. I want to offer some perspective. I have to give credit where credit is due to Auditor Kilgore. She shared this with me just about a month or so ago. We started collecting income tax in nineteen forty-eight. We were second in the country to Toledo, actually, to start doing that. Since then, we've had only five negative years, meaning a negative drop year over year, just five since nineteen forty-eight. The worst of those years, back in two thousand and nine, the second half of the double dip recession was only point eight-five percent, less than one percent. Today, we're forecasting a drop of four point seven percent, five times worse than our previous worst year. And we're not by any stretch the worst off in the country nor even the state. But again, to balance our needs on real life context for Columbus, this is five times worse than the Great Recession. Some sobering facts and figures from our auditor. I know that we're currently working on an operating fund budget for two thousand and twenty-one, which will be less than the two thousand and twenty approved budget by city council, as well as a capital budget that will be far less than anticipated at the beginning of the year. By charter, we will produce a budget that is balanced, which will also help us stay financially strong. Together, we'll work to fund those programs that are most important to the economic recovery and stability of our great city. Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to join you for a few minutes tonight and share some of those comments as we contemplate finalizing our proposed budget in the days, weeks and months ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And like we've said before, in private conversations, council is a partner as we really move through these unparalleled times. But look forward to council to be a partner with you as we continue to move our city forward. I also wanted to give our Madam Auditor a chance to speak on this as well. I know that we'll probably have a little more discussion as Finance Chair Brown brings forward that legislation, but I wanted, before we even got there, to have our auditor provide some remarks.
Thank you, Council President Harden, members of council, mayor. I would just simply add to the mayor's summary that right now, you know, the difficulty in predicting how even the next few months are going to go really hinges on things that are outside of our control. You know, if there were to be, right now, given where we are with revenues today, I'm comfortable that we're still within the limits of the revised revenue estimate, which was a decrease of four point seven percent over those two thousand and nineteen actuals. Where it gets very concerning is that if there were an outbreak or, you know, something that would impact our ability to keep our economy quote unquote open, that could very quickly and drastically alter the revenues for the city of Columbus. And so that's what the Finance Director and I spend a lot of time looking at right now. And very simply, that's going to be success of public health. Things like duration, how long this lasts, and then also some new variables in the world of economic modeling, which includes things like fear, employee fear, employer fear, as well as consumer sentiment. So we're navigating a lot, but very soon we'll be looking to twenty-one and sharing those ideas as we see projections unfolding with you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. And again, thank you, Mayor, for joining us and bringing that conversation. We look forward to working with both and working with my colleagues and the Chair of Finance as we move through the rest of the year and through the budget process. As I take into, at the beginning of each council meeting, reminding folks that we are still battling the COVID pandemic. At our last meeting on July twenty-seventh, there had been three hundred and eighty-eight deaths in Columbus. As of today, July, August or September fourteenth, there have been four hundred and sixty-nine deaths in Columbus, which means that since council went on legislative recess, there have been eighty-one of our neighbors who have passed due to this pandemic. And so we have to stay vigilant. We have to continue to follow the guidance of our Health Commissioner and continue to wear our mask and do those things that keep each other safe. With that, I'm going to go around the horn. Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with President Protem Elizabeth Brown?
No, nothing tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Council Member, Council Member Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I do have one resolution of expression, zero, one, two, seven, two thousand and twenty, to honor the memory of those lost during the terror attacks of September eleventh, two thousand and one. Whereas the terror attacks on the Twin Towers of the World Trade Center in New York City, the Pentagon in Washington, D. C., and the crash landing of Flight ninety-three in Shanksville, Pennsylvania on September eleventh, two thousand and one, accounted for nearly three thousand lives lost. Whereas on the nineteenth anniversary of that fateful day, we not only remember the fallen, but the first responders and everyday heroes that risked their own lives to save others. And whereas we recognize those who serve in our armed forces, those actively serving and those that have served throughout our country's history, we owe them gratitude and respect for their service. May our nation and its people stay forever vigilant and take positive actions to prevent a tragedy such as this from ever happening again. And whereas we extend our support to those first responders still managing the mental and physical impacts of their brave service on that day, we pray that they find peace and comfort. And whereas may all Americans, regardless of race, gender, religion, orientation or national origin, find this country to be a safe haven for freedom, justice and prosperity. And whereas Americans face another national crisis in the COVID pandemic, may we come together to offer support and compassion to those who suffered loss and bring strength to those that are still fighting now and therefore be resolved by this council of the city of Columbus. That this council does hereby honor the memory of those lost during the terror attacks of September eleventh, two thousand and one, and recognizes the commitment of first responders for their actions on that fateful day and continue to grieve with those that are still struggling with the losses. If there are no comments from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you so much, Council Member, for bringing that resolution as we all pause to remember nineteen years ago. Council Member Dorans.
Thank you, Council President Harden. No resolutions tonight, just a couple announcements. I want to remind folks that we will, council will be having its North Side Community Meeting this Thursday at five P. M. online. Each council member will host a breakout room, so constituents should feel welcome to join us. And I know we're all looking forward to hearing from residents on the north side of town. If folks are interested in RCP, they can email our Director of Community Engagement, Aaron Gibbons, at E. M. Gibbons, G. I. B. B. O. N. S. at columbus.gov. Looking forward to seeing folks on Thursday at that community meeting. I also wanted to mention, this past week, my office, along with the Community Engagement Team and the rest of council, launched the Vote Safe Columbus campaign. Vote Safe Columbus is a nonpartisan council initiative to ensure that every member of our community knows their options about how to cast their ballot this fall. We're encouraging everyone to make a voting plan this year because of the pandemic. Residents can request an absentee ballot, vote early or on Election Day at a polling place. But we're really encouraging folks to use the vote by mail option to ensure we help limit the spread of COVID nineteen while at the same time ensuring that folks can exercise a constitutional right to vote. For more information about different voting options and the deadlines associated with them, please visit columbus.gov/vote. And with that, that's all I have this evening, President Harden. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Dorans, and thank you for your leadership on Vote Safe Columbus, that we will all be right by your side until Election Day. Council Member Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. No resolutions this evening, just one brief announcement. On Wednesday, September thirtieth at five P. M., I will host a hearing of the Housing Committee to discuss the creation of proposed community reinvestment areas. Please feel free to contact my office for additional details by reaching out to Tysha Harden at T. Y. H. A. R. D. E. N. at columbus.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member. Council Member Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one resolution this evening. Ordinance one twenty-six X. two thousand and twenty to honor, recognize and celebrate Welcoming Week twenty twenty in Columbus, Ohio. Welcoming Week twenty twenty, which takes place September twelfth through the twentieth, celebrates the growing movement of communities that fully embrace immigrants and their contributions to the social fabric of our country. Welcoming Week is an annual celebration, bringing together thousands of people in a series of local events that celebrate the contributions of immigrants, refugees and new Americans, and the role our communities play in fostering a greater welcome. This year, these events have been replaced with virtual opportunities due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Efforts that promote understanding and collaboration between all members of our community are crucial in encouraging and preserving the welcoming and inclusive nature of Columbus, Ohio. At a time when political rhetoric has deepened divisions and the COVID nineteen pandemic has renewed anti-immigrant sentiment, Welcoming Week reminds us to double down on our inclusive vision and find new ways to bring together people across lines of differences to develop greater understanding and mutual support. During this week of recognition, the city of Columbus, Ohio reaffirms its belief that the United States of America is a country open to all who seek refuge in the pursuit of happiness. Fostering a welcoming environment for all individuals, regardless of race, ethnicity or place of origin, enhances the cultural fabric, economic growth, global competitiveness and overall prosperity for current and future generations in the city of Columbus. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize, honor and celebrate Welcoming Week from September twelfth to the twentieth, two thousand and twenty. This evening, we are fortunate to have Ms. Lillian Morales with the Latina Mentoring Academy to share a few words. Lillian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council Member Remy. We are all looking for a place to call home. Home is where you feel safe and accepted. For eleven years, Latina Mentoring Academy has brought together Latinas from all over the world who have chosen to call Columbus home, to build a community that recognizes the benefits of an inclusive society. And we're committed to creating spaces that are inclusive and create a sense of belonging for everyone. Welcome Week provides an opportunity to celebrate the values that unite us as neighbors, parents, colleagues, and to elevate a spirit of unity that helps to demonstrate what a multiracial democracy can be if everyone feels safe and welcome in the places they call home, including immigrants and refugees. Columbus has always strived to be an inclusive city that celebrates its rich diversity. That is one of the very many reasons why immigrants and refugees continue to drive Columbus's growing population. With this growth comes an immensely vibrant society that brings with them the uniqueness of their culture that has become woven in the fabric of our city. The Latina Mentoring Academy is proud to be one of the many organizations working to continue to make this a reality for each of us. Thank you, Council Member Remy, Council President Harden and all the members of council for your continued support.
Thank you so much, Lillian. We appreciate you being here this evening to talk about it. It's such a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the fact that Columbus draws from every continent almost equally. And with the growth of so many people moving here secondarily from other parts of the country, it's always an exciting adventure. I, being a foodie, I know that I have a couple of friends that when we see a new restaurant pop up, especially in the north, northland area where I live, we run to try it out. And you can literally take a trip around the world by adventuring into some of the restaurants around Columbus. The culinary experience, and they're usually very, very good, is typically second to none. So we appreciate the opportunity to celebrate this week and certainly ask if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. Seeing none, I move for passage.
May I, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you so much, and that's all I have for us this evening.
Thank you, Council Member. And certainly, last but not least, Council Member Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. First, I would like to just recognize an individual, and then I have one resolution. Recently, Columbus and the residents of Central Ohio lost one of its great public health champions, Ms. Cheryl A. Boyce. I want to take a few minutes to reflect on her service, particularly as it relates to racism as a public health crisis in our community. Cheryl was a founding executive director, executive director emeritus of the Ohio Commission on Minority Health. The organization was created with legislation written and sponsored by State Representative Ray Miller in nineteen eighty-seven. The Commission on Minority Health is focused and is committed to improving the health status of African Americans, Latino Hispanics, Asians and Native American Indians. Cheryl served as the executive director of the commission for more than twenty-four years and helped thirty-plus states replicate this model. She was a pioneer in the Minority Health Month movement and organized the first Minority Health Month celebration in Ohio in nineteen eighty-nine. Cheryl's passion and commitment to her work in health and human services field came about as a result of the premature death of her father. She was a fighter and she spent her professional career as a health equity champion. I want to express and send our deepest condolences to her family and her many friends, like Angela Dawson, who was currently the executive director of the Office of Minority Health, and the many others whose lives she touched. Could we just take a few minutes to just, a silence, to just appreciate the work of Cheryl A. Boyce? Thank you. The resolution that I'm introducing this evening, I will, I want to recognize the individuals who will be briefly speaking tonight, but we're receiving the resolution. Resolution one thirty-one X. step two thousand and twenty. It will be Nick Bankston, who is president of the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals. Habiba Bankston is founder of Beyond the Cell and Annie Womack, president of the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association. This resolution is to proclaim September as a Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month in the city of Columbus to recognize the Columbus Urban Young Professionals, Beyond the Cell and the Ohio Sickle Cell Health Association for their advocacy and commitment to bringing awareness to sickle cell disease. Whereas the observance of the National Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month originated in nineteen seventy-five with a month-long event to call attention to sickle cell, the sickle cell disease and the need, I'm sorry, the need to address the illness nationally and locally. And whereas sickle cell disease is a global health problem affecting more than a hundred thousand individuals in the United States, touching people of all races and some characterized and characterized by chronic fatigue and pain. Whereas it is estimated that more than one thousand babies are born with sickle cell disease in the United States. The need for education and awareness, and while much has been done to improve treatment and lower complications and to reduce symptoms for persons affected with the disease, there continues to be a gap in care and a continuing need for ongoing innovation, treatment, research and a cure, a cure for all. Some people have had it, been cured, but not everyone. Whereas the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association was incorporated in nineteen seventy-seven, the association was originally established to assist with providing payments and providing payment mechanisms for the medically indigent adults affected with sickle cell disease. And whereas the mission of the Ohio Sickle Cell Health Association is to provide education and statewide support to individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. This is achieved through a commitment and consistent focus to testing, counseling, referrals and advocacy. And whereas blood transfusions are the most common and effective treatment for sickle cell disease, the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals remains committed to ensuring that the Central Ohio has a strong and diverse blood supply, which is achieved through hosting and promoting blood drives. Whereas the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals are also committed to spreading awareness regarding the importance of donating blood and its impact and necessity for treatment of many health conditions such as sickle cell disease. Whereas Beyond the Cell is a movement that is dedicated to increasing education and awareness regarding sickle cell disease. Beyond the Cure harnesses the power of creativity and community to impact lives by sharing resources and creating a platform where individuals living with or impacted by sickle cell disease can see themselves, share their stories and be inspired to their own truth, claim the power and to live out loud. Whereas Beyond the Cell is launching its annual life drive to be held during the month of September. And this blood drive is designed to educate, encourage and empower communities of color and beyond to not only give blood, but to give the gift of life. Whereas the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals and the Ohio Sickle Cell Health Association is in support of Beyond the Cell and its life drive efforts. Moreover, each of these organizations remains committed to continuing to promote the donation of blood for the use of life-saving treatments for sickle cell disease. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby proclaim September as Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month in the city of Columbus and recognizes the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals, Beyond the Cell and the Ohio Sickle Cell Association for their advocacy and commitment to bringing awareness to sickle cell disease. I've now moved for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And now I'd like for Annie Womack, Habiba Bankston and Nick Bankston to be able to share their comments. Thank you.
Which order?
Oh, it doesn't matter which, Annie, you can speak first.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you, Council President, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Ohio Sickle Cell, which started in nineteen sixty. So September is not only National Sickle Cell Month, but it's also Newborn Screening Month, as well as Children's Cancer Awareness Month. So all of those play a pivotal role in the screening and early detection of childhood illnesses. Five thousand babies a year are screened and have a detection of an abnormality or abnormal hemoglobin level. Of that five thousand, one-fourth of them are given a second chance of life by detecting a life-threatening illness. So that is twelve thousand five hundred babies a year that are, that have contracted a life- That is 12,500 babies a year that are, that have contracted a lifelong debilitating illness. Had it not been for the 1960 newborn baby screening, so now we are 30 years of sickle cell screening out of the 57 years of newborn baby screening in the state of Ohio. So it's very important to understand and educate yourself on sickle cell disease. And we thank, we are so thankful to have a councilwoman that not only goes out and advocates for us with education, but can also speak from personal experience. So we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you that we are sharing this month with not only sickle cell, but with newborn baby screening, because that's the only way we detect it, newborn screening, also childhood cancers, which are all hemoglobin blood disorders. And we also thank the partnership that we do have with the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals and Beyond the Cell, because it is a pivotal way of showing unification in this fight against sickle cell disease. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to ask Mr. Nick Bankston, can you speak?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson and members of council for having us. Again, always a pleasure to be virtually in council chambers, as I would say. But I want to just thank you for recognizing the work of the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals. You know, we stand committed to empowering communities and changing lives, and we want to make sure that we do that by ensuring that we have a diverse blood supply. Earlier this year, we hosted a blood drive encouraging predominantly African Americans to give blood. You know, unfortunately, African Americans represent 25% to 50% less than their white counterparts in giving blood, but yet receive about 33% of blood donations. And although all of our blood is able to be used, there are specific things in each of our blood that are individual to our ethnicity. So we want to make sure that here in central Ohio, we have a diverse blood supply, but also a strong blood supply. Because of COVID-19, blood drives have been canceled, which usually happen at places of work and worship. And so we want to do our part to ensure that as we come out and battle this pandemic, that we have a diverse and strong blood supply for individuals of color in our community. So we couldn't be more happier to partner with Ohio Sickle Cell, with Beyond the Cell, with Faith Thomas Foundation, so many other organizations that are raising awareness around sickle cell and the importance of giving blood and that life-saving treatment. So honored to be here and honored to have this recognition. And thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson, for your steadfast advocacy for sickle cell. I know that you have been a strong advocate for this work for many, many years, and it impacts your family personally. So I want to say personally, thank you for your support, and we will continue to make sure that folks get out and give blood and donate life.
Thank you, Nick. And now we'll hear from Habiba Bankston. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Tyson, for the opportunity to be here and also for recognizing Beyond the Cell, which is an organization dedicated to increasing the education and awareness of sickle cell disease and also telling those true stories of those who are living with it and are impacted by it. It's an organization I founded about two years ago, and this came from inspiration from my own personal experience with sickle cell. I've been battling sickle cell disease all of my life. At the age of 17, I experienced a silent stroke, which is a very common complication of sickle cell disease. And this year, I am celebrating my 15th anniversary as a stroke survivor and also a regular recipient of blood donations, which has honestly saved my life. It's just, it's given me the strength and the ability to work and do so many other things, like serving my community. So Beyond the Cell will be hosting its first life drive, its first annual life drive. And we call it Life Drive because the act of giving blood is so much more than just that. It truly is giving the gift of life. And our mission is really to normalize giving blood within the African-American community and other communities of color. And Nick Bankston kind of shared a bit of the stats and why it's so important for us to really encourage people of color to especially come out and give blood, because those who are impacted by sickle cell disease and many other diseases, we, we need blood from communities of color. We need blood from people who look. So it, the blood drive is going to be taking place on September 26 at the end of the month, and I'm very excited about this and also the support that we have gained from across the community, especially from city council. As someone who is living with sickle cell disease and is battling it every day, it means everything to me to see city council recognize September as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. And Councilwoman Tyson, you have known me for years. You have been by my side as I have battled along my journey. So thank you so much for your continued support and encouragement along the way. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here for this recognition. It means everything.
Habiba, can you share where your blood drive will be?
Yes. So the blood drive will be at the Urban Accelerator, which is located in the Near East Side. The address is 818 Rose Avenue.
And what time, do you know?
It'll be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I want to, again, just want to recognize Annie, Nick, and certainly Habiba, and certainly for her to be able to tell her story. They just shared the importance of blood, blood, and it is a gift of life. And certainly, they, even though blood is universal, that there are differences, as I just stated, and when you have blood that possibly is not the same, not from the same ethnicities as the person who is going to get it, that you can get some antibodies, and that can create other challenges in your, in terms of your life. But it is certainly the gift of life. Many of you know that I have a son who has sickle cell disease, and certainly, absolutely, if it weren't for blood, the blood that he receives every single month, he certainly would not be alive. So I am very thankful for the work that the Urban League is doing with the young professionals and from Nick's leadership, the work of Habiba, and certainly the awareness of Annie. And I did mention Faith Thomas. So we have given a resolution to Faith Thomas, and so I don't want to have, to have left her out today. And, but also what's important is that City Hall, the City Hall is lit red. So we have, it's lit red for the whole month of September to draw attention to sickle cell awareness and that individuals will ask why City Hall red, and we'll be able to share because of the importance of what's red because of blood and that to draw people's attention to continue to donate blood and have an awareness of this particular, this disease. And so, again, thank you to Nick and Annie and Habiba for sharing their story, and we're so thankful to be able to give you the resolutions. And again, thanks so very much, and that's all I have. Council President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to, to all of the folks who received their resolutions for speaking with us. Shout out to Power Couple, the Bankstons, for representing their organizations very well. Are there any comments or other comments by elected officials? I don't know if the Madam Auditor had any additional comments before we get into this session. Treasurer, Clee, step, and the City Attorney's Office. Seeing that, at this time, I request the following ordinances to be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. May we remove ordinance 2070 dash 2020, the Health and Human Services? Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of an ordinance or resolution from consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have, have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Reemi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance number of the 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee ordinance is 1767, 1803, 1841, 1990, and 1991 dash 2020. Education Committee ordinance is 1968 dash 2020. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1533 dash 2020. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1749, 1758, 1806, 1842, 1843, 1867, 1873, 1882, 1883, 1898, 1901, 1911, 1914, 1937, 1941, dash 2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1846, 1849, 1850, 1878, and 1950 dash 2020. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 2012, 2013, 2031, dash 2020.
Seeing no speakers on the, seeing no, no speakers, may we now have a, a motion to read? Are there speakers, Madam Clerk?
I don't know, on first reading.
I don't think so. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 128X, 129X, 130X, 124X, 125X, 132X, dash 2020. Finance Committee ordinance is 1738, 1742, 1743, 1797, 1820, 1834, 1835, 1836, 1837, 1851, 1854, 1862, 1869, 1871, 1872, 1877, 1931, 1933, 1943, 1944, 1957, and 2020 dash 2020. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 1608, 1981, 1982, 2002 dash 2020. Education Committee ordinance 902 dash 2020. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1517, 1780, 1789, 1852, 1855, 1856, 1926, 1939, dash 2020. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1771, 1823, 1859, 1864, 1865, and 1903 dash 2020. Technology Committee ordinance 1790 and 1920 dash 2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions 116X, 117X, 118X, 119, 120X, dash 2020. Ordinance is 1795, 1853, 1863, 1866, 1879, 1880, 1904, 1917, 1919, 1923, 1924, 1925, 1928, 1932, 1934, 1938, 1956, 1959, 1964, 1965, 1985, and 2006 dash 2020. Housing Committee ordinance is 1831, 1832, 1833, 1890, dash 2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 1812, 1813, 1966, and 1967, dash 2020. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 2015 and 2016 dash 2020. Environment Committee ordinance 1916 dash 2020. Administration Committee ordinance is 1826 and 2014, dash 2020. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1848, 1875, 1886, 1993, 1995, 2000, and, yes, 2000 dash 2020. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 1892, 1893, 1894, 1895, dash 2020. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 2103 dash 2020, and Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0086, 87, 88, 89, and 90, dash 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any, are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? By voice?
Moved.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran's?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Councilmember Reemi?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 1813, on which I am abstaining.
Yes, ordinance passed. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. The committee is chaired by Council President Pro Tem Brown. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, we are starting with finance, and we're actually starting with the previously discussed budget reduction that we began the meeting with, the budget reduction of $41,500,000 to comply with Auditor Kilgore's reduction of the 2020 estimate of available resources. That is ordinance 1436 dash 2020, to authorize the net decrease of appropriations in the General Operating Fund to the city of Columbus for fiscal year 2020 by $41,500,000 in response to the city auditor's revised estimate dated June 9, 2020, to authorize the partial cancellation of several internal service encumbrances and other encumbrances, to decrease appropriations to the Health Special Revenue Fund by $9,500,000, to decrease appropriations in the Recreation and Parks Operation and Extension Fund by $1,025,000, to decrease appropriations in the Fleet Management Fund by $4,975,000, to decrease appropriations in the Print and Mailroom Services Fund by $270,000, to authorize the appropriation of $400,000 in the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to declare an emergency. As was stated previously, the COVID-19 pandemic hit early on in Columbus this fiscal year. So adjustments were implemented and necessary savings have been identified to cover most of this reduction. City departments did not spend, in other words, spend allocated funds in anticipation of this adjustment. That didn't just happen on, on its own, I want to point out. That was the, the hard work of the finance team and departments themselves to work on those adjustments and to make sure that we could be here today, making this anticipated adjustment with as little pain as possible and still meeting the very severe economic and health and human service crises of the COVID-19 pandemic. After completing the third quarter review, additional transfers will likely be needed based on further revised projections. And today, emergency action is being considered to immediately adjust the general fund appropriation in line with the auditor's new estimate of available resources. Auditor Kilgore, I know that you spoke already, and I would welcome additional comments from you at this time. If you have any, please speak up, because I don't always catch it with a hand raise on the screen if you have further comments.
Thank you, Finance Chair Brown and members of council. The Finance Director, as Mr. Lombardi and I spend a lot of time talking about, you know, what's happening in the local economy, and what you have before you is an ordinance, appropriation ordinance that will bring structural balance back in line with the revised revenue estimate, which we issued in the first part of June. Just a recap of that revised revenue estimate. And it's very infrequent, thankfully, in the city of Columbus, that we have to have downward revenue adjustments mid-year. We've been, you know, largely, you know, fortunate the period of expansion these last several, several years, but we found ourselves, as a result of COVID, in having declining revenues in just about all of our revenue categories. And of course, the lion, the driver behind the city's revenue is income tax, which is directly tied to jobs, you know, and so forth. So with that, I'll let you turn it back over to the Finance Director to probably talk through this ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Auditor. Director Lombardi, is there anything that you'd like to add to the auditor's comments or my comments on the ordinance?
Sure. President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, other members of council, not going to reiterate a lot that was already said this evening, but I do want to take this time to really thank my colleagues. We've been on them since March to reduce budgets that they thought we, they were going to have the ability to spend, and they have done a great job of listening and doing the right thing for the city. We began to anticipate this impact in March. We didn't know what the duration of the COVID would be. We didn't know what the impact would be on our economy. So we began to start making reductions in March. So we began to start making reductions in March. As many said, we travel banned, we froze hiring for most positions. We asked people to reduce or to freeze any annual spend. And we were able to garner $26.5 million just in the first quarter, which we thought was going to be enough. And then, obviously, we got the revised letter in June, and we began to ask departments to continue working toward this $41.5 million. We will continue to work with the auditor. I wanted to thank her for all the work that she has put into this and helping me and keeping me updated. We continue to look forward to seeing where we land at the end of the year. Anything on the positive side of zero will be good. That will help us not only this year, but also going into building the 2021 budget. And some have asked why we brought it so early this year. I wanted to make sure that the gap was filled first. This way, we can deal with the third quarter, and it's a little bit more manageable to deal with a smaller number than it is with such a big number. But again, I can't thank my colleagues enough for everything that they put into this. I really appreciate their help.
Thank you, Director Lombardi. I think that's very well said about the work across all departments and among your team members. And I will just add, not to belabor this point, but we are in, in case you haven't noticed about 2020, we are in unprecedented times, and we don't know what lies ahead in terms of that the health situation developing and in terms of the economic situation recovering or not. And all the while, a crisis like this, a pandemic like this, not only hits our budget, but it's hitting people. It's hitting real people hard. And the hardest, the people who are hit the worst and really were hit the first by this crisis as well, are folks who could least afford the disruption. So I want to take an opportunity to highlight not only the good work that the departments have done to get us to this point, and you, Director Lombardi, with as little pain as possible in our budget, because we adjusted right away, but also the really good work of this council to work through the federal funds that were given, that were distributed in response to make sure that, you know, what we see in our budget represents the real pain in community. And I just really appreciate the work of this council to respond to that. And the mayor detailed that in his remarks, but I wanted to add my thanks. Well, before I move for passage of this ordinance, I want to give council members an opportunity to ask questions of the auditor or the director, or myself, of course, if there are any. And please, again, speak up, not just hands.
President Pro Tem, I'd at least like to ask Megan Kilgore, Auditor Kilgore, a question. What's the impact in her estimation regarding the bond ratings?
Thank you, great question. Auditor?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brown. That's a great question. Bond ratings are made up of a variety of categories, including the local economy. So I will call it the external economy. It's also made up of management, and that score is something that really you and your colleagues, especially Finance, former Finance Chair Tyson, earned through the period of time of '08, '09. What that category is, is will the legislative body work with the administration to come together in tough times to make tough decisions? And historically, the City of Columbus has always done that. And as you recall, when you were Director Brown, there were very tough decisions that were made. So the rating agencies acknowledge that the City of Columbus has a history of strong management during times of economic crisis. In addition to those two categories, there's debt and pensions, which is really the capital side, as well as something we don't have control over, which is the pensions. We pay what our statewide pensions require. And the last category are our city's financials. And so anytime we have declining revenues, that will affect the ratios in that last category. But it's one of, you know, those four categories. I think it's really important to look at how we are performing compared to our peer and, meaning like-sized cities across the country. And here's the fact, you know, we are not in as bad of shape as several of our larger, similarly sized cities across the country. And that's because they might have revenues that are more sales tax, consumption, tourism taxes, taxes that had the immediate consequences of COVID. And also, our employment base here, our composition of our employers, largely financial services, insurance, healthcare, government, which is really important, education. A lot of our major employers were able to quickly pivot and work remotely, work from home, while healthcare needed to double down and invest. And that's why you do see some job growth occurring at our local hospital systems right now. But to Finance Chair and President Pro Tem Brown's point, that's what makes COVID the most inequitable economic event of our country's history. Because the average person to lose their job because of COVID here in Columbus was the most, you know, the person, the demographic that lost the most amount of jobs was the black woman. And so when you look at our tax base and you try and correlate that to unemployment, it's not really apples to apples. Those who lost their jobs were factually not the strongest part of our tax base. And so the inequities continue to persist because of COVID. So hopefully, that answers your question, Mr. Brown. I'm happy to take anything further as well.
No, Auditor, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation. I think it's important for all my colleagues to have some clarity to the impact, especially regards to the bond issue and the bond rating for our city. Having gone through this a number of years ago, it wasn't pleasant then, and it's not pleasant now. But thank you for your guidance and your involvement.
Can I... Could I say a couple things? Should I make some comments? First of all, I certainly want to thank the leadership of our financial leadership, the auditor, Councilmember Brown, your office, as well as Director Lombardi. These are unprecedented times, but again, I will always say the genius of our city was that, you know, we have an income tax. Now, mind you, we know that the income tax has been lowered based upon individuals who have lost their jobs. But in the past, as our economy was certainly moving along pretty well, we were also able to put dollars back in our basic services fund, and we put dollars back in our rainy day fund. So we were able to, we are prepared for a situation. No one was prepared for this situation, but we always knew something could happen, and we would be able to try to respond to that when that did happen. So I appreciate the genius of our past elected officials and administrations to be able to think out, to understand that something could possibly happen. And I do hear Auditor Kilgore's comments about who certainly are the individuals who are, who have suffered, the greatest are black females, and they were already not doing well prior to the pandemic. And here we are now, now in a worse situation. But I do appreciate also the work that this council has done to make sure that the black women are making sure that they're not being evicted because of COVID. We're providing other resources, not only to them, but their family. So I think we're all trying to step up and do the very best that we can in these unprecedented times. But again, I appreciate the work of our, the entire finance team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'm really glad you pointed that out. I think what's, you know, hard but smart about this ordinance is that we're starting, we started with these smart reductions this year, rather than, as you said, you know, we do have the Basic City Services Fund and the Rainy Day Fund. But the first place we looked wasn't there. The first place we looked was how we could save money in a sustainable way, given that we don't know what's ahead. So thank you for adding that. I think that's a really important thing for residents to understand and to know. Is there anything else from colleagues?
Madam Chair, if I could, just quickly add in one more appreciation, and that truly has to go to our congressional delegation. Senator Brown, Congresswoman Beatty, who fought for CARES Act dollars. We have to understand that the place that we are in is also on top of or with us receiving $157 million of CARES Act dollars and the work that our colleagues and the administration did to pinpoint those dollars out to make sure that the folks that we talked about that are most adversely affected by this pandemic can weather, could weather it, or to put that net under it so that we can get to the other side and know that it all has an impact into this budget and the budget that we will work together on for 2021. So just wanted to add that other appreciation and point of notice that we were in this place, and we received $157 million to get us through. So we are definitely in unparalleled times. Yet, we will continue to work diligently and to be prudent with the city's budget, and we will get through this. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you, Council President. Absolutely a direct line between that CARES Act and the help we were able to provide to residents, which provides us an opening to say that the pain won't be over on December 31, most likely. And there's a lot of pain in the nation right now. And I really urge folks in the Senate, particularly Mitch McConnell, to bring a true next COVID package to the floor, because communities need it, and more than communities, people need it. With that, I think I will move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Doran, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Next, in finance, we have ordinance 2023-2020. To authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to enter into a license agreement between the City of Columbus and the Franklin County Board of Elections for temporary use of the Community Room located at 2300 West Broad Street, and to declare an emergency. The 2020 general election is faced with unprecedented challenges in the midst of the ongoing pandemic. Ensuring there are enough properly trained poll workers is a crucial part of enabling a safe and secure election. We faced a poll worker shortage during the primary earlier this year, which caused chaos among boards of elections across our state. Through this ordinance, the Franklin County Board of Elections will begin partnering with the City of Columbus to immediately begin trolling, training, excuse me, not trolling, training poll workers for the 2020 general election at this location at 2300 West Broad Street. It's really important to do this work. I am really grateful to the Vote Safe Columbus Initiative and efforts to help educate people about their options to vote on, or to vote, excuse me, by mail, which is the safest way. There are some folks who will still need to and want to vote in person, and the worst, one of the worst things we could do for safety is to not have enough poll workers, trained poll workers, and therefore need to consolidate polling locations or pack more people in. Voting is the bedrock of our democracy. People should not have to choose between feeling safe and exercising their fundamental rights. So we will continue to do whatever we can to ensure everyone has the opportunity to vote safely through partnerships like this and through the Vote Safe Columbus Initiative, which I want to thank Councilmember Doran for leading. It's a multifaceted, multi-pronged effort. Are there any comments or questions from colleagues before I move for passage? All right. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Doran, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Great, thank you. May I move to Education Committee, Council President?
Please.
We have one ordinance in education, 1722-2020. To authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations to provide educational services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,683,096 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding is for the Early Start Columbus Program, which expands access to high-quality pre-kindergarten classrooms in partnership with community-based providers and with Columbus City Schools. In short, we are helping make high-quality pre-K affordable for eligible low-income families. These dollars are leveraged with funds from the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to make every dollar stretch as far as possible and maximize the number of children and families we serve. Early Start Columbus providers have demonstrated their ability to provide a high-quality pre-kindergarten education by rated at least three stars in the state's Step Up to Quality program. I want to note that the COVID-19 disruptions to providers and families alike have reinforced that childcare is vital infrastructure that supports families and our entire economy. The system wasn't really working before this crisis, and the crisis has laid bare the many ways in which that is true. Because we know that quality early education significantly improves literacy, language, and math skills. Children who reach kindergarten academically ready are more likely to succeed in school and throughout the long term, throughout their lives. Additionally, having a safe place to drop your kid off each day, knowing they're not only safe, but being enriched in learning, that helps parents secure employment and advance their own careers and earnings, ultimately providing increased economic security for families across our city. That's the basis of our efforts to expand high-quality pre-K. And as I have said in the past, I truly believe that funding for early childhood is one of the best investments we can make as a city and as a society. I'm proud to continue supporting the Early Start program, and I'm grateful to Matt Smido and Sierra Adams with the Department of Education for their ongoing work on these important investments, the hard work they do around the clock to allow us to make these investments. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Doran, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And Council President, I have an ordinance in rules and reference. I don't know if you want me to do that now or later.
Oh, sure. Let's go ahead and do it.
Okay. Tonight, in rules and reference, we have ordinance 1829-2020. To create, in Columbus City Codes, Chapter 1913, restrictions on the deployment and use of equipment by police. This was introduced on July 27 and is on second reading tonight. Are there comments or questions from colleagues?
Councilmember, I know that Councilmember Mitch Brown has a comment, and Eric seems like he's trying to get to his...
I see him.
Thank you, Council President. I would move to table this ordinance indefinitely. And in so doing, that if we do it through a voice vote, this issue requires a lot more attention than we're currently able to dedicate to it.
Is there a... Is there a second for a voice vote?
Second.
Comment before we call for a vote?
Certainly, I apologize, President.
No, that's fine, thank you. I just, I want to stress, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I want to stress that my introduction of Chapter 1913 in Columbus City Codes tonight represents one piece of our efforts to reimagine public safety. Its aim is to reinforce the covenant of trust between peace officers we employ and the residents they serve. And I think we all have seen firsthand the broad agreement among all residents that we all want safer neighborhoods. But we know that despite that, polarization persists in the conversation around how to achieve that. Currently, some residents, and we've heard from them, are uncomfortable with what feels like unprecedented questioning of the policing institution by other residents in our city and by those we elect to serve. But it bears reminding, if you'll permit me, that actually, there is more about this conversation that is old than new. For as long as governments have taxed their people, we have wondered what they've what they've done with our money. Were the tax dollars stretched as far as they could go? Were they spent on something that enhanced public welfare? In a democratic society, this kind of scrutiny is expected and enshrined by our laws. So again, today, our residents, so many of them are asking similar questions. Is our money doing the highest good that tax dollars can do? My initiative to demilitarize the presence of police has been, from the start, rooted in the idea that to meet that standard, to do the highest good with taxpayer dollars, the way we outfit and equip our police officers cannot look and feel to residents as if we are at war. This was the case at Broad and High a few months ago, which has been the center of protest activity in our community. But it's also the case in our neighborhoods throughout the year. This council heard record hours of testimony and received record amounts of feedback on this topic. Proposed Chapter 1913 codifies directives, excuse me, on control agents, expands them to specialty munitions, and creates additional accountability and transparency around the use of military-style weapons. By doing these things, this legislation, I truly believe, helps our police division better embody the peacekeeping at the heart of every officer's role and the heart of why I know most officers sign up for serving in the first place. The legislation also caps our aviation unit to four helicopters, down from five. And this has been a hotly debated topic. On the one hand, helicopters bring measurable value to police responses in specific situations. Officers themselves have shared with me how the aviation unit enables them to get eyes on a crime scene in a matter of minutes after they get a call or to respond to certain emergencies in ways a cruiser simply can't. On the other hand, we heard from residents, the unit is expensive. Residents object to the noise, the surveillance, the stress response that their presence creates. And to balance these myriad perspectives, this legislation sustains the role of helicopters in police while modestly reducing their number by one to free up significant resources. When we go back to that age-old question that all residents, by right and without exclusion, have the authority to ask their leaders, are our taxpayers, our dollars being put to the highest and best use? It is evident that any public safety discussion that exists solely within the bounds of what we do after a crime has occurred is sorely lacking in moral imagination and in comprehensiveness. We need to look upstream. We concede that effort with the modest changes contained in this legislation. Yes, it requires us to make tough choices, but doing so will enable a more effective strategy, I believe, to keep all of our residents safe in the long run. Thanks. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me those comments.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair and sponsor of this ordinance. There is a motion and a second to table ordinance 1829-2020 indefinitely. Please call the row. My voice.
Ms. Brown.
Vote no to tabling the ordinance.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
No.
Ms. Faber.
No.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
Ms. Tyson.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Orders is tabled. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have enough time. I apologize.
I believe there is a public speaker.
Since we are tabling it, I am moving forward without calling the speakers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think we might have enough time before zoning, though, to get to the Safety Committee. If there are only two ordinances, I believe, in that committee before. So the next committee to come before council is the Safety Committee. Chair Mitch Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have in Public Safety, 1828-2020, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter a contract for maintenance and repair services for our crime lab instruments with Specialty Unguardians LLC, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of $81,216,000, $81,21600 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Director Stewart is on the line. Would you please speak to the issue with regards to competitive bidding and the waiver requested?
Yes, sir. Council President Harden, President Pro Tim Brown, council members. President Brown, the Division of Police currently has a variety and various scientific instruments that require maintenance and repair services. This equipment is used to process and present evidence in criminal prosecutions and requires strict adherence to rules of evidence. It has established mandatory timelines. The crime lab, again, has these instruments that are requiring repair. The best people to repair them are the people who manufactured them, which is why the request is being made specifically to have the manufacturers repair their equipment.
Thank you, Director Stewart. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Also this evening, sir, I have ordinance 1940 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations regarding this ordinance with Galls RT2 LLC for the purchase of replacement uniforms and accessories for the Division of Police from existing universal contract and to authorize the expenditure of $1,404,160 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Director Stewart, would you also provide some clarity and background information regarding replacement uniforms for our division?
Yes, sir. Specifically, this is to do just that, replace uniforms that need to be replaced due to wear. I've also asked Chief Quinlan to be here to be able to address that, and I believe he is.
Chief.
Okay. I think I got the mute off. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you all of council for their support and consideration of the fact that we were recently awarded from Fleckheimer the best-dressed police agency in the country. And I think the renewal of our uniform is specific for that. Personal protective gear, reflective vest, the white shirts that we wear, which is very few agencies in the country do have the white shirts. The entire gear package that we provide officers annually, which is part of our collective bargaining agreement as well. That's what this funding will do, is supply officers with the needed equipment to maintain the presence in our community, visible presence.
Chief, would you also speak to the accessories that this does not include armaments?
Correct. This is a, this is a purchase with Galls, the vendor who has the bid contract for approval for uniforms. That does not include weapons. It does not include the body armor that SWAT or anyone else uses. That's through a whole different vendor process. The body armor was supplied separately. So this is, again, for raincoats, for shirts, and winter coats, and hats, and the normal gear that 1,900 officers wear every day, summer and winter.
Thank you, Chief. If there are no questions from my colleagues, then I move for passage and I ask for a voice vote.
Second.
Please call the row.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
Ms. Tyson.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Orders is passed.
Council President, if I may, I have one more ordinance in Veterans Senior Affairs, and I will be very quick, sir.
Three minutes. Just joking.
You got it. Thank you. Ordinance 1915-2020 to authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $12,896, $96,000 to the Recreation of Parks Grant Fund for the operation of various grant programs administered by the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, authorize the city audit and transfer appropriations between the object classes for the Ohio Department of Aging, Franklin County Office of Aging, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Aging Programs, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will reduce the Recreation of Parks fund unappropriated balance by $12,896,000. The appropriation of supplemental grants from the Ohio Department of Aging, Franklin County Office of Aging, and Department of Housing and Urban Development will enable the Recreation of Parks Department to continue those programs as administered by the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and to carry on various services for the balance of 2021. Also, we have, present is Director Rakowski from Wrecking Parks. Do you have any comments, sir?
Director Brown, you hit on all the points. Even though this is a large ordinance, it is a fairly routine ordinance that you will see happen over the course of the funding cycle of these appropriation ordinances. Nine different programs and various grants. But we appreciate your support on this to keep our sister organization, COAA, moving forward and serving our seniors at a very difficult time.
If there are no additional questions, I move for passage.
My voice.
My voice. Yes, my voice.
Thanks.
Second.
Please call the row by voice. I think you're a mute member.
Ms. Brown.
Stain.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
Ms. Tyson.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Orders passed.
Thank you. This evening, sir, and I did it in three minutes.
You got it now, right on the dot. If there are no more, actually, may I have a motion to recess so we can go to zoning?
So moved. Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
All right, we are adjourned. We will convene zoning in three minutes. A motion to convene meeting number 34.
So moved.
Second. One more second. Please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now in our zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on it. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. Sorry. And, wait a minute. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, anyone here who wishes to speak for or against a council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving test must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do so prior to the beginning of the reading of each variance on the agenda. So, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Ordinance nineteen forty-six dash twenty twenty to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections thirty-three fifty-three point oh-three, permitted uses of the Columbusy Code for property located at fifty-two sixty Go Down Road to conform an existing single-unit dwelling in the L C two Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Michael McCandish. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is approval six to zero. I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Call the row.
Remy Tyson, President Harden.
And now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance nineteen fifty-one dash twenty twenty to rezone twenty-seven hundred Bryce Road being one point five seven acres located in the southeast corner of Bryce Road and Tussing Road from the, from the C four Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Oops. The applicant is the Skillken Gold Development LLC, care of Sarah Gold. The proposed use is fuel cells, convenience store, and eating and drinking establishment. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far East Air Commission's recommendation is approval ten to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row. Wait.
Thank you. Now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty to rezone eight seventy-five Jason Way being seven point three seven acres located in the southeast corner of Jason Way Avenue and Schuster Lane from the L M two Limited Manufacturing District to the, um, to L M Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is the Safco Brothers, care of attorney Craig. The, the proposed use is office warehouse storage and repair shop. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is also approval, seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Thank you. And now I move for-
Please call the row.
Wrong side.
Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
And now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty to rezone seventeen seventy-five Hilliard and Rome Road being one point two six acres located at the west side of Hilliard and Rome Road, six hundred eighty feet north of West Chester Woods Boulevard from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is North Star Realty, care of David Hodge Attorney. The proposed use is a commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far West Air Commission's recommendation is also approval seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Please call the row.
Tyson, President Harden.
Amendment.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Ordinance nineteen fifty-five dash twenty twenty is to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh-three seven R two F Residential District, thirty-three thirty-two point fourteen R two F Area District Requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point two-one C D Building Lines, thirty-three thirty-two point two-five Maximum Side Yards Required, thirty-three thirty-two point two-six Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and thirty-three thirty-two point two-seven Rear Yard of Columbusy Code for the property located at eighty North Winter to permit two, two-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R two F Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is two, two-unit dwellings on one lot, and the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air, Near East Air Commission's recommendation is also approval at ten to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
All right, so the next, the next ordinance is nineteen sixty-two dash twenty twenty to rezone eight thirty-five North Cassidy Avenue being point three nine acres located at the west side of North Cassidy Avenue, ninety-five feet north of East Sixth Avenue, from the P one Parking District to the M Manufacturing District. The applicant is CCC Columbus LLC, care attorney Jeff Brown. The proposed use is outdoor storage, and the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the East, East Columbus Civic Association's recommendation was also approval. I would now like, so I think we have two individuals who are, um, in council chambers, and so I would now, um, first like a, uh, staff presentation on this particular ordinance.
I'm not sure if-
I can't hear them.
Yeah, I'm not sure if somebody's still muted in speaking through the presentation.
Apologize for that, um.
There we go.
The site consists of a portion of one parcel zoned in the P one Parking District. This property is the subject of recent code enforcement action for establishing outdoor storage uses in the P one Parking District without receiving a certificate of zoning clearance. The requested M Manufacturing District will allow the outdoor storage of materials on the site, which is associated with the industrial facility developed on the remaining portion of the parcel. A concurrent council variance has been submitted to reduce open storage setbacks. The site is within the planning area of the East Columbus Neighborhood Plan, which recommends light industrial land uses at this location. The site is also located within the Port Columbus Joint Economic Development Strategy, which recommends office and light industrial land uses. The requested M Manufacturing District will allow an outdoor storage use that is compatible with the land use recommendations of both the plan and the strategy, and is consistent with the zoning pattern of the surrounding area. Therefore, City Department's recommendation is approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, um, Haley? Seeing none, I would now like a, um, Attorney Jeffrey Brown is the attorney, um, representing, uh, the client for this property. Is Mr. Jeffrey Brown? Would you please like to have a presentation, Attorney Brown?
Sure, Ms. Tyson. Um, just so you know, this property was zoned decades ago as part of the overall large manufacturing facility. It was originally zoned for employee parking, and over the years, it has turned into, uh, storage for the facility. Uh, and so what we're doing here with the zoning and the council variance is rectifying that because we don't need it for employees' parking, and we do need it for storage. Um, I met with the Civic Association, explained what was going on, answered their questions. They recommended approval. Uh, we went to the Development Commission with the request. Um, no one showed up at that meeting, and they again recommended approval. Uh, what this company does is, is take carbons and provide that for filtration, uh, whether you're talking about air or water, uh, especially with water treatment facilities, that's what they do. And what's being stored there in those bags is carbon. Uh, what they can do is when the carbon gets used up and, uh, it gets, part of impurities as it goes through the filtration process for your water, for example, they take it, recondition it, and be able to reuse it. So that's what the storage is, so the existing situation really would not change. Uh, it would merely reflect what's actually going on in the property.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Brown. And so I now have, um, there are two, two speakers, uh, who are, um, against this ordinance. And the first speaker, uh, no, Council President Harden, if it's Susan Rouse, is that the first speaker? She's in council chambers.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can kind of, uh, do assist now and bring-
Thank you.
Would Ms. Susan Rouse please come to the podium? Good afternoon, Ms. Rouse. Thank you for coming to council. Uh, you, you're here to speak against ordinance nineteen sixty-two. If you would just state your name, your address, and if you're representing any organization, and you will have three minutes to, uh, give your comments.
We can't hear her.
Uh, Ma- Madam Rouse, one second. I apologize. Uh, could, could somebody make sure that the, I thought that could be controlled from.
He is unmuted, sir, but Mark will come down to check the volume level.
I think we're good to go now. Thank, thank you, Ms. Angie, and thank you, Ms. Rouse. Uh, thank you. If you would, if you would just do your name, your add, i- it's still not working? I apologize. One second. Our, our IT person is, is just coming. It is twenty twenty, so we have these issues sometimes.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear him, yeah.
My name is Susan Rouse.
We can't hear her now.
Mark, Mark, it's not working. I apologize, Ms. Rouse. I wonder if they're picking up through my speaker, maybe? Uh, both of our speakers are in person. Um. Madam Chair, if you, if, if you would indulge me, would you mind moving to a next piece of legislation, and then I'll give a note when we can-
Sure, I can, yes, I can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, let me see, that's, all right. Ordinance nineteen sixty-nine dash twenty twenty to rezone eight thousand one Ravines Edge Court being one point eight four acres located in the northwest side of the Terminus Ravines Edge Court from, uh, located, okay, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to Commercial Plan Development, uh, Development District. The applicant is Emily Program, care of Kate Norris. The proposed use is an inpatient medical treatment facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition's recommendation is also approval, uh, seven to zero. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. Can we do a sound check right now for nineteen sixty-two? I apologize.
Are, are you want to go back to it?
I, I just want to do a sound check.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I think we are in business. All right, we're back to ordinance nineteen sixty-two. If that's, if that's under the direction of the chair, is it?
Yes, so that is fine.
All right. Madam Cross, uh, Ms. Cross is speaking on ordinance nineteen sixty-two. She's speaking against it. Uh, and, and now we're good to go. So if you give your name, your address, if you represent anybody, and then you're good to go. Welcome, Ms. Cross.
Rouse.
Hello, my name is Susan Rouse, and I live at seven nine one Northview Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one nine. And I'm concerned today about, uh, the rezoning because they, in the letter, it stated that, uh, they wanted to expand their property to within one hundred and twenty-five feet of my house. And if that's correct, um, we now have a sort of woodsy area right there, and if, I don't know if they're proposing to change that and come to the edge of that property or to just the parking lot that they're talking about.
Uh, Ms. Rouse, if, uh, i- if that's all, if, if that's the question that you'd like to answer, we can, um, you can yield back the remaining of your time, and, and I can, we can see if we can get that answer to you during this portion.
Right. So once we hear the, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, okay, so what will happen is you've, you, what will happen is, um, the, uh, attorney Jeffrey Brown will respond back to your concern of it being a hundred and twenty-five feet, um, uh, by your house. So he will address that in just a few minutes.
Okay, so you want me to come back?
Well, no, he'll share. I, I, I don't want to speak for him, but I think, I do think I know his answer, so I'll just wait. Can you, if you can just give us a, we're gonna have for another speaker that's against it also, and then Mr. Mr. Brown will address, I'm sure, both of the, both of the concerns.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll answer that in just a few minutes. The next speaker.
Yeah, okay. Madam Chair, you can stay.
Could you not, we can now, um, hear from Mr. Curtis Adams?
Thank you. Mr. Curtis Adams. Mr. Curtis Adams is here to speak on ordinance nineteen sixty-two as well. Mr. Adams, welcome, welcome to council.
Hello, uh, my name's Curtis Adams, and I live at eight oh five Northview Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one nine. And I live at the end of the street with Earth around up to Draxel. And the property that you're talking about is right, the little wooded area, is right over there. And I can hear the factory all the time, but then a few years back, there was black sand that landed on everything over there, you know, all of our property, the chairs, your cars, and everything, and I was concerned, what do they- And I was concerned, what do they really do, what's going on there? And if they start bringing things over, how much closer it's going to get to me, because I'm right there with you. It's definitely right there affecting me. And if they bring it over here, then, you know, it's terrifying, you know, with this amount.
Okay.
Also, I should ask Kerbin, Mr. Adams, were you aware that, that the applicant presented to your Civic Association, did you get that information, a notice about this zoning previously? Any information?
Not that I know of.
Okay. All right. Well, what we'll do is, we're going to, we'll ask the applicant to come back to the, well, he's not there, but we'll ask the applicant to address your issue about, well, the black soot and it coming closer to your home, and we'll also, he'll also address Ms. Rouse's concern about it being 125 feet of her house.
Correct. And if, if they send it sit that close to her, that means I'm even closer, you know? And this concern about if they're going to bring it over properly, I mean, you don't want that closer to you, you want to keep it over where it's at right now, you know? So why would they bring it over further, you know?
All right.
Change the whole scenery and everything over.
Okay, well, we're going to let Mr., Mr., we can let Mr. Attorney Brown address those questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. I think if Haley could put the zoning map up, I think we can clarify this very quickly. When the property owner owns more than one parcel, the city code requires us to notify anybody that's within 125 feet of that parcel. So you can see all that purple? That is all owned by the same property owner as had a lot of people that aren't very close to what we're doing. The piece of property we're talking about, and we're not talking about moving any building or moving the manufacturing building closer to anybody, that gradient will front on Cassidy is the only thing that we're talking about. So you see that it's already surrounded by other men and manufacturing, and doesn't go back into the neighborhood. So we're using it for outside storage, and we're going to continue to use that outside storage if city council would approve this request. So there's no buildings on this property, it's not moving any closer to anybody. And the reason these two property owners got noticed, I believe, is just because we had to notify the larger parcel, not just the gray rectangle that you see on your screen.
Thank you, Attorney Brown. Thank you. So again, for Ms. Rouse and Mr. Adams, again, I think he has explained that it's only 125 feet based upon the entire partial, parcel of land, and it will not change the current property that is within, within this particular area. So it would not affect Mr. Adams or Mr. Rouse. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes, that's my, yes. Because what we're, what, we're not changing anything than what we're currently doing right now on that rectangle piece.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues to Attorney Brown?
If I may, Chair Tyson, just to ask Mr. Brown, the individuals expressed some concerns from a environmental concern, is there something that can be addressed with that, Mr. Brown?
I don't, I am not aware of any issues with that property. What's on this outside storage are bags of carbon. As I said, that their primary business is filtration and emission controls, et cetera. So what they do is they provide this carbon that gets used, for example, by the city of Columbus in their water treatment facility. The carbon sucks out the impurities, and they have a process which they can take the impure carbon and change it back in, recycle it into carbon that can be reused. And so that's occurring in the facility. This piece of property that we're talking about just merely has bags of carbon stored out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, so one thing I would ask is, if we could get, if we could get Ms., Mr. Adams's information to provide that to you, and maybe you could still address, and he mentioned that at some point there had been black soot closer to him.
I'd be, I'd be happy to talk to him about that. Put him in contact with the plant manager.
Yes.
If there's a issue like that.
That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, Councilmember Favor, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Council President Harden if, because since we can't see the chambers, if the question, does it appear as though the question has been resolved from the first speaker?
Thank, thank, thank you, Councilmember. The, both of the speakers are currently speaking with staff, and I think kind of following up on what Chair Tyson asked of, of Mr. Brown to follow up. And so I can't, I can't say specifically, but they're speaking with staff right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilman Favor. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I would move for passage.
Do we have to wave second reading?
I'm sorry. I need to wave second rea, I'm sorry, wave second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you, and now I'd move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And then I'll move to the, the variance that goes along with this property. And again, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Ordinance 1963 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3363.41, storage of the Columbus City Code for property located at 835 North Cassidy Avenue, to permit reduced open storage setbacks for industrial development in the M Manufacturing District. The applicant is CCC, the Columbus LLC, Attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is outdoor storage. The East, the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the East Columbus Civic Association's recommendation was also approval. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1970-2020 to rezone 3505 West Dublin Grandview Road, being 0.9 acres located on the south side of West Dublin Grandview Road, 180 feet west of Federated Boulevard from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Dave Fox Remodeling, care of Greg Race. The proposed use is to expand a parking lot for a contractor's office. The City Department's, the City Department's, I'm sorry, recommendation is approval, and the Northwest Civic Association's recommendation was also approval, seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to man to emergency.
Second.
Please call the row.
Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
I made it.
Thank you, now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1699-2020 to rezone 5960 West Broad Street, being 41.55 acres located at the northwest corner of West Broad Street and Dodery Road from the R Rule District to PUD 6 Plan Unit Development District and the LAR 1 Limited Residential District, and to declare an emergency. This was, first I would like to, well, first I'll do this. The applicant is Metro Development, care of Jeff, Attorney Jeffrey Brown. Proposed use is single unit and multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Westland Area Commission's recommendation is nine to two. This item was tabled on 7/27, so first I move to take it from the table.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from the table.
Thank you, and now I move the table until 10, 10/5 of 2020.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you, and that concludes the zoning agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a bit of housekeeping, I forgot to ask for permission to dispense reading of the journal, so may I have a motion?
Second.
Please call the row.
Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President.
We are adjourned. Councilmembers, are we good to roll back into council? All right. Let's give a few minutes for folks to turn their screens back on, our colleagues in the administration, to virtually come back into council chambers. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Doran. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Just one piece of legislation the mayor puts in committee tonight, that is ordinance number 2071-2020, to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter new grant agreements with the African American Male Wellness Walk, Community for New Directions, Community for Refugee Immigration Services, the Columbus Urban League, Impact Community Action, and Legacy U, in a total amount of up to $392,000, to add needed capacity to address COVID-19 specific services for boys and young men of color, to authorize expenditure of the related expenses starting March 1, 2020, in an amount of up to $390,000 from the CARES Act Fund, and to declare an emergency. In 2014, the White House, under President Barack Obama, launched the My Brothers Keeper Initiative to address persistent opportunity gaps faced by boys and young men of color to ensure that all young people can reach their full potential. In responding to a call, in responding to a call of action, the Department of Neighborhoods established the My Brothers Keeper Village to be a hub of all the work throughout the city of Columbus, work that you, President Harden, have been well, well represented in. We, and we all know that COVID-19 pandemic is causing unforeseen challenges related to virtual learning for young people in our city. The My Brothers Keeper partnership with these nonprofit agencies funded as part of this legislation will launch an engaging and interactive online-in-person back-to-school campaign called Building Optimism and Opportunities for Successful Transitions, or BUST. This campaign is intended to serve as a way to provide central Ohio young men, young male students of color with academic support, resources, and nourishment during the shift to online learning. This legislation authorized the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter new grant agreements using CARES Act dollars, the African American Male Wellness Walk, Community Actions for New Directions, Community Refugee Immigrant Services, the Columbus Urban League, Impact Community Action, and Legacy U for academic support services during this pandemic. Emergency action is requested to ensure that academic support is provided as the new remote school year has already begun. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? I do not see any hands up, so with that, I move for passage.
By voice.
By voice.
Remy, did you second?
Second.
Please call, please call the row. By voice.
Ms. Brown?
Same.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
President.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Do you mind if I go ahead and move on to rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in rules and reference, I have ordinance number 1802-2020. At this time, I'm going to request to table this ordinance until our next regular meeting on Monday, September 21, 2020, as I'm working with the City Attorney's Office reviews some of the amended language for this legislation. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to table ordinance 1802 until September 21, 2020.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you, President Harden, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilwoman Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 1942-2020 to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund and within the Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with complete general construction for the intersection improvements James Road at Livingston Avenue Project, to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,830,921.3 from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, the Transportation Grants Fund, and the Street and Highways Bond Fund for the project, and to declare an emergency. This contract consists of the reconstruction of the intersection of James Road and Livingston Avenue, where it includes removing the existing span wire signals and replacing them with the mast arm installation, installing eastbound and westbound right turn lanes, and improving to stormwater drainage, lighting, and sidewalks. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1979-2020, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash between projects within the Streets and Highways Improvement Non-Bond Fund, and the appropriation of funds to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into agreements with the Central Ohio Transit Authority relative to the Link Us East-West Corridor Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $544,256.14 to pay for the project, and to declare an emergency. Link Us is a collaborative initiative co-sponsored by the City of Columbus, Central Ohio Transit Authority, and the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. The Link Us Mobility Corridors Initiative is designed to help manage growth and traffic growth, provide new mobility options, expand access to resources, and promote equity and economic vitality along key regional corridors. Today, we are considering legislation for the East-West Corridor. Cota will be leading this corridor initiative in partnership with Morpsey, the City of Columbus, and other jurisdictions along the corridor. This East-West Corridor project will focus on three geographies: West Broad Street, Downtown Columbus, and a study of East Main and East Broad Street. I'd like to ask Randy, born trader with the Department of Public Service, just to provide some additional information about this piece of legislation. Randy?
Can folks hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Favor, Council President Harden, and Council Pro-Town Brown. The Department of Public Service is very excited about the corridors and their planning for Link Us Columbus, from the northwest corridor that we kicked off earlier this year to the east and west corridors with more coming, and an innovative solution will bring to enhancing mobility options along key corridors. Significant population... Significant population is coming. The department is eager to play a role, a leadership role, in transportation mobility planning to manage it. Doing nothing is not an option. These corridors provide an opportunity for our department, our partners like Cota, Morpsey, the city, and affected communities to develop a shared vision and work towards advancing solutions that will improve mobility options to make high-quality, affordable housing, employment, education, and healthcare more accessible to more people. Community input from stakeholders and the public is welcome and essential as we move forward in making these corridors a reality. I urge you and all residents of Columbus to go to www.linkuscolumbus.com and give your input on the survey for the northwest corridor and also sign up for information on the east and west corridors as they advance. When we kicked off the Link Us effort earlier this year, at that press conference, Cota President Pingerton announced plans to launch the East-West Corridor project, building on the foundation of the northwest corridor work, and this is all proceeding thanks to the vote tonight. I can take any questions that you might have, but thank you for having us considering this legislation.
Thank you for that additional information. Council President Harden, I believe that you would like to make a few remarks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to Randy Borretrager in Department of Public Service. I am excited about this piece of legislation. Link Us is something that if you are excited about transit in our city, you should be excited and check out Link Us. If you are excited and really be thoughtful about Columbus being the largest city in the country without an advanced transit system, so this is an interest point for a lot of folks, if you are interested in housing and how we create more affordable housing, you will be interested in Link Us and this process. If you are interested in the conversation around equitable Columbus and us building a community that is for all, then you will be interested in this Link Us initiative. In short, this is a big, big deal for Columbus, for our future, as we think about how we add five hundred thousand to a million people to our community. We do that by investing in transit, investing in development along transit, and having big conversations that include zoning and housing and all those other things that we know make up our policies, and really would encourage folks to be a part of this conversation. It is, when we look back on our city twenty years from now, and we talk about the fantastic, amazing transit system that serves all and connects all, it will have its origin in Link Us. So would encourage everybody to get engaged and be a part of this process as we move our city forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Council President, may I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in criminal justice, we have ordinance number nineteen forty-eight dash twenty twenty to authorize the city attorney to modify an existing contract for special legal counsel with Pratt, Brown, James, L.L.P. for the case of Iman Khan Entertainment, Etta Rossar, Etta Case Number Two Dash Twenty Twenty, C V zero zero one zero one, pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio to authorize the transfer of one hundred and ten thousand dollars within the general fund, to authorize an expenditure of one hundred and ten thousand from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Chief Counsel in the City Attorney's Office, Laura Becker-Morse, to provide additional details. Laura?
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Thank you, this particular ordinance is addressing the need to expand for special counsel services. In this particular case, the Columbus City Attorney's Office has a conflict of interest. We are continuing to represent the city. However, the two officers involved, Officers Rossar and Lancaster, also have an employment action that is pending that's creating the conflict of interest within the City Attorney's Office. It is anticipated that this money, this expenditure will be necessary, as it seems at this particular point in time, like this matter will be going on to trial.
Thank you. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committees, Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember?
Thank you, President Harden. Have ordinance number seventeen eighty-two dash twenty twenty to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of nine thousand dollars for the Youth Suicide Prevention Grant Program. It is to authorize the appropriation of nine thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Ohio Department of Health is offering supplemental funding to current child injury grantees to expand current youth suicide prevention activities to include remote delivery due to COVID. Columbus Public Health will contract with a community partner to convert their established school programs that involve suicide prevention and adverse childhood experiences, which are ACEs-related pieces, into a remote learning format. Research will be conducted on the best practices for providing virtual suicide prevention and/or screenings for the fall in the school districts that they serve. Students that are served by the community partner will receive virtual suicide prevention programming and will potentially screen, and will be potentially screened. For more information about this program, you can contact Carissa Harvey, the Director of Injury Prevention at Columbus Public Health, six one four, six four five, sixty-one thirty-eight. But this is so important because providing these funds to support mental health services for youth is important to me, especially as it relates to my work with the black girls. COVID-19 has exacerbated issues that black girls experience. There is an increasing need for mental health services. Black girls are taking on more responsibility caring for their siblings and household chores during COVID. In addition, many girls are feeling isolated, having suicide ideations, and would benefit from self-esteem and mentorship programs, as well as peer conversations. Key findings of a recent survey conducted by Rocks, an organization focused on girls, provide additional insight about girls during COVID. If there is loneliness and isolation are negatively impacting teen girls at alarming rates, the majority of girls found that the upheaval associated with COVID-19 was detrimental to their ability to organize, concentrate, and complete their schoolwork, and COVID has also remarkably amplified the stress levels of teen girls. So that's why this ordinance is so important, to make sure that we can make sure that our girls are receiving services and that they're not going to, anything that we can do to prevent suicides amongst our young people is important. So if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is eighteen forty-five dash twenty twenty to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, known as WIC, in the amount of six million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, to authorize the appropriation of six million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. This grant would be from October one of twenty twenty through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, and again, this is the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children. This program serves as a safeguard, to safeguard the health of low-income pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five, who are nutritionally, at nutritional risk by providing numerous nutritious foods, information on healthy eating, including breastfeeding promotion and support, and referrals to healthcare and other services. Franklin County WIC currently serves twenty-eight thousand, thirty-two clients. And the WIC program is offered at fourteen different locations throughout the city. Columbus Public Health, WIC operates non-clinics, and Nationwide Children's operates five that are open Monday through Friday, each with each site serving an evening clinic. WIC also has services, the majority of their appointments being conducted via phone. Once the appointment is completed, clients are scheduled for a short, five-minute appointment at their clinic to load benefits onto their WIC nutrition card. For more information, contact Don Sweet, six one four, six four five, six seven five five, because this is a very important program for our families. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is eighteen forty-seven dash twenty twenty. It is to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the Moms and Babies First Black Infant Vitality Program, a culturally-specific home visitation program that provides in-home, family-centered service coordination and education services to high-risk, low-income African-American pregnant women and their infants to age one who reside in fourteen specific Columbus zip codes, and to authorize the appropriation of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Moms and Babies First Program will serve one hundred and twenty-nine high-risk African-American pregnant women and their infants up to age one. They will be, they will also provide services to reduce infant mortality by supporting preventive health and prenatal services, initiation of healthy behaviors, and setting family goals. The zip codes will be four through two oh three, four, five, six, seven, eleven, fifteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-two. The ongoing visits will be either from telehealth or face-to-face with outreach workers to support parents in learning how to improve their family's health and provide better opportunities for their children. So it's a very, very important program to support our moms and their children, so that they will have better outcomes and have a really good start, so they can have a better overall quality of life. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is eighteen seventy-four dash twenty twenty is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept additional funds from the Ohio Department of Health for COVID-19 Contact Tracing Grant Program in the amount of one million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, and to authorize the appropriation of one million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Ohio Department of Health has distributed over a hundred, over twelve million dollars in funds to local health departments to be used specifically for contact tracing activities, and they are so important right now to make sure any individual that is, could be diagnosed of COVID, that we're able to trace the individuals that they have been around, again, to try to mitigate the spread of COVID. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is twenty sixty-nine dash twenty twenty to authorize the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into grant agreements with the Community Development for All People, Community of Caring Development Foundation, and Afrocentric Personal Development Shop, in an amount total up to six hundred thousand dollars to add needed capacity to address COVID-19 specific services for youth and family empowerment, and to add needed academic services during COVID for youth and families in the city of Columbus, to authorize an expenditure up to six hundred thousand dollars for these services, starting September the eleventh of twenty twenty with the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. With the spread of COVID-19 and its corresponding response, it is necessary for the city of Columbus to provide additional funding focused on our youth and families, specifically in the case of job readiness and educational empowerment. These funds will be invested, will be invested in community groups and providing direct assistance at the grassroots level for our youth and families in the city of Columbus. The services included, this contract cannot be provided by existing city employees because these services are beyond the city's current responsibility and capacity to provide, and we're thankful for these organizations to be able to continue to work with our children and provide resources to their other families so that they do not fall behind based upon this, based upon the pandemic. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage by voice vote.
Second. Please call the row. My voice.
Ms. Brown?
Brown? Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed.
Did you call me? Yes.
Yep, it was recorded.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right. I'll move for passage. All right, thank you. All right, the next ordinance is twenty eighty-six dash twenty twenty. It's Greater Hilltop Shalom Zone Youth and Community Empowerment Grant Program. It's to authorize the Director of Development to execute a grant agreement with the Greater Hilltop Shalom Zone in an amount up to two hundred thousand dollars as part of the city's youth and community empowerment grant program, and to authorize an expenditure up to two hundred thousand dollars from the CARES Act Fund, to authorize the payment of expenses starting March one of twenty twenty, and to declare an emergency. The Youth and Community Empowerment Grant Program shall again assist Columbus neighborhoods with engaging youth and families in positive experiences and job readiness, and these funds will be distributed to key community partners with a proven, I'm sorry, with proven, I'm sorry, my notes, proven track record and database, data-backed outcomes, and these funds provided by the city shall be distributed via many grants to grassroots, community-based organizations with the same goal, positive experiences for our youth and families and job readiness. If there are no questions or comments, I would, and this, I'm gonna step back a minute, as a key community partner, the Greater Hilltop Shalom Zone will distribute grants at a minimum of ten thousand and no more than twenty-five thousand to organizations predominantly or wholly in their geographic boundary, targeting one of two areas, youth, family engagement, and workforce development. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, ma'am.
Council President Harden, I apologize, I need to, I was having some technical issues. I do have to abstain from the previous ordinance, ordinance twenty sixty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Okay. So we should go back, should we pass this one and then go back?
Second on this one.
Second it? Yes, okay.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
And let's go back. So we want to go back and...
I make a motion that we reconsider twenty sixty-nine, twenty twenty?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Reconsidering ordinance twenty sixty-nine?
Thank you. So again, ordinance twenty sixty-nine dash twenty twenty to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into grant agreements with the Community Development for All People, Community of Caring Development Foundation, and the Afrocentric Personal Development Shop in a total amount up to six hundred thousand dollars to add needed capacity to address COVID-19 specific services for youth and family empowerment, and to add needed academic support services during COVID-19 for youth and families in the city of Columbus, and to authorize expenditure of up to six hundred thousand dollars for these services starting September the eleventh of twenty twenty within the CARES Fund, CARES Act Fund, and to declare an emergency. And again, the, this funding is integral to the success of our families and young people during COVID, and we want our children to be able to continue to move ahead academically, as well as provide any other services that are needed for them to do so. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Please call, please call the row by voice.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance? Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Same.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passes.
Thank you. And the last ordinance, if we move back to page twenty-two, it is ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty. And it is, and again, as I mentioned earlier, this is sickle cell awareness month and that this legislation is to authorize Columbus Public Health to enter into a grant agreement with the James Cancer Hospital and Sola Research Institute in support of efforts to enhance telehealth participation for sickle cell disease patients, to authorize an expenditure within the health operating fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes Columbus Public Health to enter into an agreement with the James Cancer and Sola Research Institute to support efforts to enhance telehealth participation for sickle cell disease patients. Telehealth quickly became a prominent mode of healthcare delivery because of COVID. An informal survey regarding telehealth services was conducted on twenty random sickle cell patients being seen during one week in, one week in the clinic. Of those twenty individuals, ten barriers were identified amongst the six patients. The Ohio State Comprehensive Sickle Cell provides care for four hundred patients with sickle cell disease. And the majority of these patients with established care at the James live in the Columbus area. These Columbus residents with identified barriers to access would be targeted, be a targeted constituency group. A formalized screening would be developed to allow for systemic identification of barriers needing to be addressed. This program will allow for development of a menu of options such as cellphone plans, internet hotspots, cards for prepaid cellphone minutes, and cellphone enhancements to accommodate physical disabilities, hearing, or virtual impairments with the goal of breaking down barriers to utilization of telehealth. Measurements of success will include increased telehealth participation amongst participants, especially as COVID-19 remains a threat to public health, decreased no-show and appointment cancellation rates, and improved health outcomes related to the rapid access to healthcare providers. So if there are no other questions, no questions or comments, I would certainly love my, appreciate my colleagues supporting these options to be able to, especially telehealth options, to be able to provide services to individuals with sickle cell disease. And I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have a motion to adjourn meeting number thirty-three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting number thirty-three is adjourned. We have three non-agenda speakers, a couple on WebEx, and one in person.